Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our call is meeting in the morning, six o'clock. Thank you for being with us. There's a sign up sheet in the back. We'd love to know who is with us. Please make sure you sign up. Ms. Civic Clerk, madam, is there anyone that signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Parker, this time, can you confirm we have a forum, sir?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you. Let the record show all of Cameron's brother. For the invocation this evening, Ms. Leslie Johnson, may I ask you to come forward and offer an invocation for us? Thank you for being with us.
My far forward.
Too many.
Thanks for inviting me. Let's just ask the Lord to bless us. Holy Lord Father, we come to you now in Jesus' name. We just want to lift up this meeting, lift up the people of my little town before you in all the matters that we're going to discuss tonight. Lord, we know they're important to you, just like they're important to us, and we're going to offer them to you. We ask your blessing. I ask your blessing on each and every one here. I pray that you bless the work in their hands. I pray that you bless their homes and their families. Lord Father, I ask especially that you would pour out on those in our little town who are needing an extra touch from you at this time, Lord. Lord, and bless our churches and bless this community and every neighborhood and every development. There's hurting in our little town, and there's hungry, and there's lonely, and there's broken. And, Lord, we just give it to you. We thank you, and we praise you, and I know that every day the sun comes up, you're going to have new mercies for us. We give you this meeting. We give you our agenda, Lord, and I ask that you just pour out upon it and upon each one here. Lord, we love you and we praise you and we honor you. You are holy and beautiful and perfect, and we thank you in Jesus mighty name.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, if you have the agenda before you that was previously distributed, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I have a motion, but I have a second.
Go ahead.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you, counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we have a special recognition this evening for two individuals. I believe I have one of them with us. Yes, Ms. Joanna is here, and so tonight, we're going to recognize some individuals. I'm going to call both their names out, that have contributed towards the mission of assisting us in building our community. Joanna Kearns, who is with us this evening, and Cassie Rasko serve on our planning commission, and we want to recognize them and thank them for their time and their efforts towards making our community a better place. The planning commission is an entity of the city that helps guide our growth and our development in a way that makes us a better place. Both Joanna and Cassie have been with us as we've transitioned, and our leadership has transitioned. We continue to transition and change into an organization that promotes quality development and to implement best practices relative to land use and development standards for our residents and our businesses. And we want to thank you for your time and your contribution. So if you'll come on up, we'd love to give you a token of our appreciation and wrap your pitch around. Continue to do it. Thank you, Sandy. We're going to open the public here. Is the applicant for the auto present with us?
Yes.
Would you like to come before and offer anything, sir?
Sure.
Could you state your name?
Yeah, Sean McNeil. And I went to J-19 Adventure Park, or Land Frat LLC, sorry. So I've never done this before, but y'all bear with me. Me and my kids put this together. I thought it'd be a good learning exercise for us. But we are here asking for a variance from the city, from the normal building codes. Think normal building codes have you put a primary structure before you have any secondary structures. We've got a big parcel of land, and we've got some kind of big plans, but we don't have the funding right now to do our main structures. Don't know exactly what that's going to be yet. Got our eyes on a couple of different things, and we'll probably do multiple structures as the years go on. But for now, we're here asking for a bathroom for me and the team to use when we're out doing farming activities and planting fruit trees, some of the other landscaping. It's a big parcel of land, and we've got a lot of area to cover and clean up, working on trails and things like that. So we've already got a subject permit and a well, and we just want to put in a basic bathroom. You can see here, this is where it'll be in relation to Highway 515. There's about 100 feet in elevation going up above Highway 515 here, so we won't be visible from any kind of roadways or anything like that. Here's a little proposed diagram of the size. You can see real small, just two bathrooms back to back with a little storage area in the middle where we're going to put our well pump to help with that. This is a presentation of the outside of the building. You can see it's one of those standard workshops that we're converting into, into a little bathroom. Yeah, the purpose of this is to allow an accessory structure on a property that lacks principal primary. I think the city office is going to probably go through a lot of that same stuff, too, so I'll try to go through it quickly. Y'all just stop me if you have any questions. But the proposed accessory structure will include restroom and shower facilities for on-site property caretakers utilizing a well and septic for environmental health. We're planning for retreats and other farming activities and need that. Also had my kids write up a little bit about what they thought might be. I'll read that to you, so my daughter can say that she had this on TV. Firstly, having a shower out at J-19 would be phenomenal. If my team is doing field work with fruits, dirt, and mud, you normally get sweaty after. Yes, being sweaty, you might say, just deal with it, but think if it was you. It's a very time-consuming and hard drive all the way back to our houses 15 to 30 minutes away, just to shower or use the restroom. Having a shower and toilet would help tremendously. Secondly, J-19 is quite different from other companies. We don't have one main building base or camp. You see, our company land is like one whole amusement park. Think Six Flags, it's an amusement park, not a really one building. So maybe we can be the exception. Again, this would help so much. And finally, a shower and toilet are really all we need. Jasper, it might not affect you in such a lengthy way, but in the long run, the shower and toilet are significant to us. Another way to view it is if you owned any outdoor company, it's kind of mandatory for a bathroom. But this is J-19 bathroom, it would be more private. But if we want J-19 to grow, this is the kickoff to it. You might think, how? Well, if our employees are able to have a shower and restroom in reach of work, more work will be done, and honestly, think people will work more efficiently if they're not sweaty and have to wait to use the restroom until after work. Thank you for your time, Beeps. Ten-year-old, that's where she's already living. And yeah, that's all we got. Questions or...
Counsel, any questions to be added? I think you can tell Ms. Mason, thank you for the presentation and the information. This time, I'll turn this back over to staff. Ms. Burgess, I believe you have Elliot presenting this evening?
I do, indeed. All right, good evening, mayor and council. So as Mr. McNeil stated, he is here on behalf of Land Frat LLC, which is the operator of the J-19 Adventure Park at 3640 Highway 515 North. And Mr. McNeil is here requesting a variance to allow for an accessory structure, or in this case, a shower and restroom facility, on a property that lacks an occupied principal primary building. So a quick overview of the site context. The subject property is located south of Highway 136 and east of Highway 515. It is a C2 general commercial and 313 acres is the largest seaport parcel of land in the city. It's currently used as J-19 Adventure Park, which hosts private members-only hiking and geek trails, and it has private on both Highway 515 and Highway 136. So as far as the site context goes, because the site is so vast, we took contact photos from different areas around the site. They just kind of showed the existing conditions and the topography. The image there on the bottom left is taken from the base camp for the onsite caretakers, and this is the general location where the accessory structure will be located. And on this location, as Mr. McNeil indicated, it is formed by proximity to existing septic. So Mr. McNeil is here requesting a variance to allow for an accessory structure where there is no occupied primary building. And this is something that is prohibited in all of our zoning districts, and the intent of this is twofold. First, it's to protect the aesthetic quality of the city, but then also, from a safety perspective, we want to ensure that people are not trying to circumvent our regulations and limit a structure that is not habitable. In this particular case, this provision presents a challenge, because our ordinance does not necessarily contemplate an open land use like the outdoor recreation facility. So I would sort of play this to a golf course or a park where there's not necessarily an occupied primary building, but those facilities can certainly benefit from ancillary storage or a gazebo or a pavilion or a restroom structure like this for their members or patrons. So here again for the proposal, on the left, I've got that floor plan for the proposed restroom facility. The facility itself is going to be about 130 square feet, so pretty small. And then there on the right, you can see where the proposed facilities will be located in relation to Highway 515. As Mr. McNeil stated, there's about 100-foot elevation change from where the roadway is to where the structure is, and there's about 1,000-foot separation from the structure in the 515 right of way. So I do want to quickly touch on the site challenging topography, and this is something that's likely informed this sort of interim outdoor recreation land use that we have going on. The property experiences great changes that are irregular and across the site of more than 200 feet. So again, this is really informed sort of the limited use of this very large commercial zone property. So when you file a variance request, we look to Section 94 to 10 of our ordinance, which has five inclusive criteria that warrant variance. The first criteria is that exceptional conditions apply to the property, and here staff believes that this is met by just giving the exceptionally challenging topography. The second condition is that strict application of the ordinance will create unnecessary hardship, and staff believes this is also met, just given that our ordinance does not contemplate the need for an accessory structure for open land use. The third condition is that such conditions are peculiar to the property involved. Again, the property has very challenging topography, and we do believe that this is unique to this specific property and land use. The fourth condition is that the exceptional conditions are not the actions of the property owner, which obviously the property was not created by the property owner. And the fifth and final criteria is that relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good. And here again, staff believes that this is met, just given that the proposed accessory structure will be completely screened from public view and will not be open to the public, just the employees, property owners, and members of the private club. So with that, staff is recommending approval of subject conditions. The first condition is that the applicant shall obtain an prior permit prior to commencing construction. The second condition is that the accessory structure shall be served by private well and septic. The third condition is that a business license is required for the private club. And then planning commission added a fourth condition at their hearing on Tuesday, that the accessory structure shall not be visible from public right of way. And then at the recommendation of our city attorney, we have added an additional condition that the accessory structure shall go away if the land use changes beyond the private club. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. So that was a total of five conditions?
Yes.
The three present and the two discussed?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here on the public that would like to speak on this item for us? Seeing no one from the public, then I will close the public here. Counsel, next item on your agenda is the consent agenda. You'll go to the floor for a motion.
Motion, consent agenda be approved?
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to new business. Item number one, consideration approval of a request for utilization of ball fields, parks, committee, and let's go. Committee?
Committee, so no new updates since our work session last week. Able to connect with them, and we don't have the event form filled out, just because they are traveling. But I didn't know if we still needed, and Brandon, you can help me out here for the motion tonight. If we go into this RFP, do we need the motion to go into that process, or do we still move forward if we decide to table tonight and discuss any?
From a staff perspective, I think discussing this at Thursday's work session was that we were going to heed the advice of legal to move forward with developing requests, proposal, applications. And I think at that point, we could have, if it was in the willing, council to do that forward. We could certainly do that. And then, of course, based on the timeframe, it may or may not be ripe for any decision in March, I mean, April. But nonetheless, there could still be an application pursued at the March work session or the April, as we'll continue work on the RFP.
If I recall, there's going to be a form for land use, and there's no form updated. So there's nothing truly for us as the council to vote on this evening, as far as a form?
But that's where the RFP to go into that process. Is that something we need a motion for, is what I was trying to make a clarification on?
I think a motion would be fine, did RFP process to lease sale for properties.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to go into, start the RFP, RFP process to utilize the ball fields at Jasper City Parks with conditions that have been outlined here in the package.
Counsel, I have a motion to have a second.
Sure.
I have a second, any discussion, counsel?
Exactly, what is the RFP going to be, a question?
Committee for Mr. Douglas, the RFP, or Mr. Siphon, do you have an RFP bill?
We have not had an RFP or an RFP, but it's going to be a request for proposals for use of the ball fields. One of the conditions will probably be that they have to be I-1C3, and that should limit the number, and then another condition would be that they have to agree to maintain creative deals, and then, you know, just once we get that response, as the council can choose, you know, best response.
Insurance as well.
Right.
I was going to add, talk about insurance.
They got to give the city and have insurance, and...
And this would be anybody that applies.
Well, what I contemplated was that, you know, we do an RFP for like a season so that we could do it for the entire year, and then next year, we do it again if they wanted to do it again. But anybody that fits the conditions of being a I-1C3 and willing to do the improvements and willing to have the insurance could apply.
Because we had a lot of people that were, had inquired about doing this before this group became a little more aggressive in pursuing it. And I just want to make sure that we're exposed now to the opportunity to the people that approached us first.
Yeah.
If they can still address...
You know, under the statute, you got to advertise, got to host it on your website.
Should we be doing that with all of our property? That people are utilizing?
When you're leasing, you're supposed to, yes. And we most recently did it with the cell tower on the building.
Any other discussion, counsel? Motion and second for RFP to lease ball fields to be built? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you, counsel. New business item number two, consideration approval of Living Word Church Good Friday and the Ball Field Easter Egg Hunt. Ms. Goldner?
Good evening, mayor and council. So before I get started with Living Word Church's bench request, I would like to take just a moment to talk about events in general, because I think that there is some confusion and some inquiries out in the public about why the city requires an event application for public spaces. Similar to other communities, the city has multiple parks and open spaces that are great to have events held at, and that could be something as small as an educational seminar to a wedding. We do get a lot of weddings at Lee Newton Park, to a car show, to whatever it may be. And so these are public spaces that the city is responsible for maintaining and making sure that the folks that are using these facilities are kept safe. The city has had a reservation of public space application for at least as long as I have been here with the city, and not like other, not unlike other reservations that you may make in your regular life, for dinner, for a tea time, to do an activity somewhere. The city asks that anyone that is wanting to hold an activity or an event at one of our public spaces to fill out one of our event applications so that we can put it on the calendar. That way, you don't have to worry about you show up and there are four other groups that are wanting to use the same space, just like you. We can also evaluate whether there are insurance requirements that may be needed to use the events. And so I felt like that was important to say. So this evening, Living Word Church has requested to preserve Lee Newton Park on Friday, April the 19th, which is Good Friday, for their annual Easter egg hunt and activities. This is a very popular community-wide event that Living Word Church puts on. They have done this for several years in a row. There will be music, there will be fun, there will be food, and I have heard that there will be between 10,000 and 12,000 Easter eggs that will be ripe for the picking. And so I may be there. The event is scheduled for Good Friday, which is, goodness, I have my dates wrong. April the 18th, I apologize. They will set up around...
It's written in the package.
Yes, I just...
You're good.
Thought I'd make it all the dates.
You're good.
They will start set up around 2:00 PM, should have everything packed up by 8:00 PM. It is completely their volunteers that do all of this work, and put this on really for the good of our community. This is a free event. And so part of the reason why we wanted to have them here before you this evening is, you know, this year, we are celebrating the folks that actually want to do good work in our community, and this is an example of good work in our community. We do have Living Word Church here this evening with us, and so if you have any questions, I know they'd be glad to answer anything that you may have. And other than that, we ask that you approve this event application so that they can start their plans and start advertising.
Awesome. Ms. Goldner, who do we have from Living Word with us?
So I have Mark Lewenberger, is that correct? Okay. I apologize. Yes, I have Mark's here this evening, and I have Pastor Mark as well.
Pastor Mark Corado is our lead pastor and director of ministry.
Fantastic. Thank you all for being with us and for sponsoring this event. Counsel, any questions or comments for Mark and Mark?
Just one, first off, thank you, guys, but I just want to see how 2024 attendance was for you guys, and so we'll see, was it great?
Yeah, so it was really good. You know, our goal was 10,000, we have 12. We have about 1,000 people there. That's the second year we did it. The first year, we had probably about 600 to 700, so we're expecting well over 1,000 this year. I do want to make a statement that we do not, this isn't for our churches, this is for the community. We don't take collections, everything's free to everybody, and we do it really just to show the love of Christ to the community. And, you know, our church is, we're growing pretty rapidly now, and we have a passion for, you know, we give a lot of money to the food bank for cares. We have two people, actually three members on the board of ACIS Youth now, we have two people on the board of the food bank, and one person on the board of the thrift store. And, you know, we do movies in the park. There's more than, as we grow, we want to do more for this community, because we do love our community. And, you know, we have a huge property, and we could easily do this our own property, but we think the park is a much better neutral place than, because it's not just for our church, it's for everything. Anything else to...
No, I say it all.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, you'll go to the floor for a motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you all.
Just so you know, I have about 15,000 eggs this year, so...
Thank you all. Counsel, item number three, consideration of request for variance. This is the same item we've heard in the public here. At this time, I'll ask the applicant if they want to restate or state anything new.
No, I think we're...
All right. Thank you, sir. And terminate our staff.
Good evening, council. The item of your consideration is a variance request to allow for an accessory structure on a property that lacks an occupied principal primary building. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the three conditions that are outlined in your staff report, with the addition of a fourth condition by our planning commission, that the accessory structure shall not be visible from public right of way, and with the addition of a fifth condition by our city attorney, that the proposed accessory structure, or, sorry, the variance shall terminate when the existing private club land use goes away.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, in your application, you have the four conditions stated, the fifth is from legal on the use change?
No questions?
Yes, sir.
Are these ADA compliant? Those kinds of...
For our staff and/or applicant?
Yeah, probably not. They're going to be very small. I mean, if we, if we need to make it ADA compliant, we can, you know, we were just intending to make this, you know, for our team, but if we need to make, you know, are you talking about adding like a wheelchair ramp and things like that?
Well, just the clearances and so forth for the width of the doors, and I know it's kind of, you're on top of a mountain.
Yes, I think that will be, you know, included in the code, if I had to guess, when we do building codes and we get our permit, because we have to get a permit to build it anyway, so I assume if they want us to make it ADA compliant, we will, we're happy to do that.
And councilor, if I may, they're not required to be ADA compliant, because they will be private facilities.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you'll go to the floor for a motion on this item.
My motion is being approved. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, counsel?
It'll be with all five conditions on that.
Well, I'll ask my typical question. Do you understand the conditions as they've been presented, five conditions, and accept them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And number three is the existing private club. That was important work.
So is my draw.
Counsel, any further... Counsel, any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, counsel. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
What are your Jeep trails rated?
I haven't ever rated them. I would say they're probably all easy to moderate, you know, unless we've had a heavy rainfall sometimes during Jeep Fest, they come out and say, we're going to upgrade your trails to moderate or hard, but for the most part, they're easy.
Moving on, item number four, consideration of alcohol license for public supermarket store 2047. Ms. Burgess, welcome.
I was hoping that Lindsay would reprise her role this evening, but she is dead set on us doing this now. Good evening there, council. Mary Elizabeth, Department of Development Director. Here we are to recommend approval for an alcohol license for Publix. It is packaged beer and wine, and they have allocated Mr. Matthew Dolan, who is here, present here tonight, as their manager until they actually get somebody, a different person to come in and take over the store. So as you know, in approving for alcohol licenses with corporations, it's slightly different than, say, you know, a package store or something like that. So Mr. Dolan is who they have put up for the application right now, and they will change it over once they have named their new GM, from what I understand. The site was duly posted, the two signs at the two entrances, and the size requirements stated in the ordinance, as well as advertised in the newspaper for consecutive weeks. Mr. Dolan did pass our background check and chief doctrine signed off on us. This is Zone C2, and this is an appropriately zoned location for a package sales application.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, information for you, I'm going to yield the floor for a motion. Motion and second. To be have our alcohol license for Publix. Have a motion to accept.
Sir.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, counsel. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number five, approval and acceptance of submitted RFQ for auctioneer services. Mr. Douglas, sir, welcome.
Good day, Mayor, Council, and for the public. You may recall that we had discussed Thursday evening the work session moving forward with acceptance of the request for qualifications that we have received. You may even recall that November 4th of last year, we had sought after, received direction from you all to pursue either gov deals or to move forward with RFQ for auctioneer services. We spoke as a team, and obviously during the holidays, it was not advantageous to move forward, so in January, we reconvened. We advertised for the RFQ January 30th, and as discussed a moment ago, we kind of brought this up on Thursday. We have received one respondent who did meet the qualifications, and as such, we are moving forward with Zachary Waters Auction as the recommended entity to help as the auctioneer. Once again, this person did meet the criteria set forth in the packet of information, which is included in your, in your packet this evening. For full disclosure, Mr. Waters isn't a employee of the city. However, he stood apart in terms of doing this proposal through his own auctioneer services with all this other FBI number and whatnot. He did go ahead and secure an insurance policy. As of Thursday, he had nearly gotten the retainer of sorts, but we suppose that he was going to be selected, but I did advise him that it would probably be to advantage to go ahead, since he was the only respondent, to go ahead and move forward. So I think our senior clerk at closing your packet, they actually binding policy. So with that, we just asked for council's representation of how you all want to move forward.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion approved, accept Zachary Waters Auction as the auctioneer.
I have a motion, maybe second, counsel?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I request a brief recess on multi-letations.
Yes, sir. We will raise some reasonable and formidable. Thank you for your patience. Moving on to the next item, item number six, a consideration of intergovernmental agreement with Higgins County City of Jasper Public Properties. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and the public. As discussed at our February 27th work session, we have been in discussions with Higgins County in regards to how we deal with public properties that the county may have in the city and vice versa if we ever hit that situation. It's typically the way that city-county governments are, there's kind of either a written or unwritten kind of policy that you do yours, we do ours. As best practice, it is good to have a new governmental agreement, so that way there are expectations created and met versus just kind of, hey, city manager's fine with it, move forward. There had been some typos, for lack of a better word, in the document that Mr. Siphon had identified. Those were corrected and I believe the senior clerk has placed into the packet as the final document. So with that, just any further questions or it's y'all's pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, as you may recall from our work session, I have been in touch with the commission chair and both post commissioners at this discussion and the next item. For this item, I'll yield the floor for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All I did was yield the floor and motions for what?
Approval.
Oh, sorry.
Approval and acceptance.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second, every discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important that we continue to do our due diligence as well as appropriately document the agreements that we have with our counterparts at the county. It's not a reflection on them, it's more a reflection on the last several decades of issues that we are continually trying to work through, so I think this is a good opportunity to partner with them on this. That's all, sir.
Thanks, sir. Have a motion and second, any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, counsel. Item number seven, discussion of airport lift station, Mr. Douglas. Before you do, sir, if I can, you may not even have anything you want to add. Counsel, as I mentioned, I spoke to the chair and both post commissioners. The discussion was a positive one, and we look forward to them turning in the airport that we discussed. I don't have it at this time, so I will yield the floor for motion to table. Mr. Douglas, unless you have anything else, if you have any questions, you'll have. Counsel?
I make a motion to table, any action on the transfer of the lift station at this time?
Thank you, sir. Have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, counsel. That should be coming back to us pretty quickly, and we'll move on that. All right, development of local infrastructure, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Bass.
Well, obviously, we continue to be excited about the public site. Coca-Cola is now preparing for their open house as well, they're ribbon cutting in that new facility, which I've heard is nice and outsized media facilities. I think one of the most exciting things is coming out of our enterprise meeting last week, when we learned about the plans for us looking forward for the next 20 years in developing our capital improvement plan, and also plans on how we will be able to implement that over the years, which includes the possibility of us doing our own comprehensive plan, which we have talked about now for several years. I think it's important to mention that the state and the folks at the DCA are adamant about accurate comprehensive plans and meaningful ones, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to do a meaningful comprehensive plan just for the city. I'll also add that when you do a comprehensive plan, really everything you do needs to tie back to that comprehensive plan, and the DCA also strongly recommends that you tie that to strategic plans and also action plans. And as council will recall, we worked through our first formal strategic plan in August of 2023. We have to focus back on that when we can, and as you plan your community, when you're talking about looking 20, 25 years in advance, you can't just all of a sudden decide that you're not going to follow your plans if you want to achieve that. It takes some dedication, it takes a high hand, and it takes a lot of dialogue. So if we're going to find ourselves in situations where we think we take a different direction, that's to be under careful evaluation, which is actually part of the strategic planning process itself. So it's tremendously promising. If you study the calendar that Mary Elizabeth put forth, it's very detailed in its plan. It involves a tremendous amount of public input, and really excited about the process, and I know she is as well. And I think it will help highlight the quality of people that we have in our city under our employment and part of our team, so. Thanks, sir.
Yes, and Mr. Bass?
I want to help them in Mary Titts, your department, on the fine job they're doing. They do a little outreach, too. They are partnering a lot with our county counterparts, they're helping with the UCC. They're just doing a really good job, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Finance administration, Mr. Ray, let's name.
Counsel, including your package is the financial report for the month of February. Appreciate, this is the 3rd of March, and you got a financial report out, that's a good job. The other thing is, we are looking at updates to the employee handbook and should have something for, or tempting to have already for the next presentation for next meeting.
Anything else to add? Enterprise committee, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Lynn?
Again, in your package, there's a report from Infra, InfraMark, that they call it a client report, I guess, through January, some good information in there. I believe they're doing a tremendous job for us, and getting a report like this just reinforces the thought that we've made a good decision bringing them in.
Again, we spent some time last Friday looking at our challenges in detail, identified potential projects. More importantly, we're focusing on 2045, so 20 years in advance, we're looking at what we'll be facing and how to start making decisions that will solidify what the future of our city looks like in a sustainable way, so really excited. Prospect, challenging, so.
Parks and properties, Mr. Hannah, Mr. Bass?
Really main thing, I don't know if y'all have some kind of duplication device or cloning. It seems like Josh has been everywhere. I know that he's turned into a building crew as well, helping out planning zoning back here in the back building, so kudos to him and his team for that, just assisting others. But also, too, saw that he cut the grass over by the bathrooms downtown, so I don't know how he's finding time, but kudos to him and the team, because everything's looking right.
Looks really good down there, does.
Yeah, I mean, just go back to the behind the jail, what they've done, they got rid of all the bushes, it looks so clean, it's sharp, they fixed it up and making a lot of good repairs. They are really just doing a good job, and I appreciate all their hard work. Josh's speech.
Thank you all. I have public safety next, Mr. Hannah and Ms. Snake. I do want to mention fire safety awareness and fire danger in our area. Chief Sher, if you don't mind coming forward, sir, for just a moment, and if you will let council and the public know the conditions that we're currently facing weather-wise, burn ban, no burn ban, what do you suggest, what do you look at, what's the fire market looking like?
Well, the fire market, as you say, right now, we're faced with dry surface fuels, so that makes the leaves and everything on top of the ground pretty dry, even though we've had some rain in the past and recently. That comes with low humidity in the teens and slight winds that we've been having, it makes things very risky for wildfires. And as everybody can look around, look out the window, everywhere you see, we're living in a wild urban interface, where we've got forests and woodlands that are mixed in with where we're living, or houses off where the city is. So that makes it a particular hazard for us that we have to pay attention to. Right now, we're recommending not to burn outside unless it's definitely necessary. Probably see that a day or so, a burn ban come out for the sea lanes, it's partly incorporated sea lanes, something I'll be coordinating with fire marshals probably firsthand, but yeah, things right now are very volatile when it comes to fires. We recommend to use extreme caution anytime you're burning outside, whether that's cooking outside, such as grilling and things like that, or fire pits, it only takes one or two embers to get away, and then we've got a problem on our hands, so. Something that we can't handle with fire department against City of Jasper, but still we want to be weather, fire weather aware and make sure we're doing the right things. Get approved.
Thank you, sir.
Please, please.
Mr. Hannah, Snake, committee.
Chief took the words right in my mouth, and we were talking before the meeting, just becoming fire wise and leveraging nfp.org for additional resources and preparing your property and becoming fire wise, cleaning out those gutters, the debris around your house, just cleaning up in general.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. It's time, Mr. City Manager, turn over your comments and input.
Thank you, Ms. Comer, and believe it or not, I think I've exhausted a lot of comments of the last week or so with some committee issues and other retreats, so I'm going to defer my time to our deputy city manager, Ken Goldner. Welcome back.
Thank you. And I get to end the meeting on a high note, because I have some things that I think you will enjoy seeing this evening. We always enjoy celebrating our employees' work anniversaries, and we have several in the month of March. Here they come.
Do you really want?
Okay. So we do, we have several employees that we are celebrating, and we will pretend that they're up there on the screen right at the moment.
Technology's great, but it works.
It is great, but I don't know.
Okay. So... I have to ask who it is, that would be great.
Yep.
So I'm going to go ahead and just read out the names because we have several folks, like I said, and we have some folks that have some considerable tenure as well, and we definitely want to celebrate those things. So in the public works department, we have Dan Jewett, who has been here for a year. We have Stephen Meadows, who has been with us for eight years. On the police department side, we have Chris Lowndes Jr., two years, Davy Logan, one year, and Jimmy Wong for five years. Emmy, how do I get to the next page? Okay, great. So also with our public works department, we have Curtis Holden with five years of service. Back to the police department, Brandon Heath with four years of service. Right here at city hall, Abigail Gleason, whose smiling face you see all the time when we come in, she's been with us for four years. And then we have Sean Allen with the fire department, one year, Jordan Burton with seven years. And then in our water utilities department, Dakota Clark, who is also celebrating one year of service with us. And so we thank them, we appreciate them. one year of service with us, and so we thank them, we appreciate them, and I wish that I could have shown you their pictures, so. Um, unfortunately, I have another one, and I, this one is really good, I would really like for it to come up, and I don't think it's going to, unfortunately, but I will say that Chief Share has, uh, stepped up to the plate and has agreed to be our First Readers Jail and Bail detainee representing the city. Very, very happy about that. Aunt John, as he likes to be called, is on the run, he's going to need our help to stay out of jail. I believe it is Tuesday, April the twenty-ninth, Chief Dawkins, who is very excited about this, will be picking him up and carting him off to the old jail. So for those of you that are not familiar with First Readers, it is a phenomenal program. There is a, a chapter here in Pickens County that has been in operation since two thousand and nine, and they have given over a hundred and seventy-five thousand books to children under the age of five, and that is all for free. Every child under the age of five that enrolls in this program gets a free age appropriate book, um, for free every month until they turn five and they're ready to enter into school then, because reading really is one of those things that, that prepares you for success in school and in life. These are our future leaders that we are providing these books for, and the Jail and Bail fundraiser is really critical for first readers to be able to continue with this program. They estimate that it costs three dollars and fifty cents per book, per child, per month, and so basically forty-two dollars a year will provide a child with twelve months' worth of books, and that's every year that we do that, and so Chief Share will be asking for all of your help, I'm sure he will be sending you out something to the public, we'll start advertising that as well, any help that you can help us to where Chief Share does not have to get to jail, or maybe you'd like for him to stay in jail for a little longer, and so, you know, we'll, we'll take the money for that as well, but First Readers really is a phenomenal program. If you have children that are under the age of five or grandchildren that are under the age of five, please, I encourage you to sign them up for First Readers program. It is completely free, and it provides those age appropriate books, so. Uh, we'll get his detainee picture out at some other time. Sorry.
Is there any chance of that showing up on Facebook?
There is, there's a very strong possibility, since we weren't able to see it tonight.
I believe Goldilocks has been a detainee before.
Yes, Goldilocks has, and she's given up her, uh, origin crown, so.
Babyface has been a detainee before, so it's about time someone takes it home.
Yes.
Good job, chief.
It's a great program.
It is. City council comments, counsel, turn to review for any input from the floor.
Just want to say with the weather getting warmer outside and the events kicking off, uh, visit Pickens, no Pickens, uh, Pickens County Progress, all these people do a great job of promoting all the events that are going on in our city. Stay involved, read these things, and, and figure out what, uh, what kind of suits you and what you want to attend, but, uh, challenging to get involved and take a gander at all the great things that they are promoting.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, anything further? All right, next item is mayor comments I will pass this evening, as I believe staff and counsel and the public, you've done a phenomenal job, uh, thank you for what you do. This time, I'll give the floor for a motion to go into executive session.
This will be in executive session.
Motion and a second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.